Lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Your Honor, Councilman Rich Gard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Wartness for tonight's meeting?
Motion to excuse Mayor Wartness?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes. I declare a quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Right now, we will have a presentation from the rendezvous committee. And the city administrator will present the speakers this evening.
Yes, Your Honor. So, we have our rendezvous committee presentation. With us tonight, we've got Georgia Davis, Mike Shelley, Pat Newland, and Courtney Bollander is on the committee too. Even though she's sitting up here, she's very much involved in that committee. So, we'd like to have them come up and give a presentation to us, and then you can ask any questions you have.
Thank you for having us here this evening. We want to express our thanks to the city for our partnership. It has really been valuable and valuable to the Riverton Rendezvous Committee to be partners with the city. So, thanks for all you do. We did present you with our tentative schedule of events for next year. It has, as many of you have become familiar with the Riverton Rendezvous, it has a lot of events that have been going for many years. There are, every few years, we come up with a new one, and we're always welcome to events, new events, and new ideas. So, if anyone has any good ideas, please bring them to our attention. We're always looking for volunteers as well. So, if anyone is interested or know of anyone else that's interested in joining our committee, please, please let us know that as well. A little bit of history about the rendezvous briefly. We started in 1981. We were the 75th anniversary of the, of the city of Riverton, and, or the birthday, I should say, of the city of Riverton. And it started as a one-year event. And it was so popular that people decided that they wanted to have it continue. And this upcoming year will be number 35. So, it's unusual for a balloon rally to go that many years. So, we're pretty fortunate that ours has been so well-supported by our city and so popular. And if, if you have any questions on the history, or any of those sorts of questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to our balloon pilots and to Courtney to talk about our partnership and how that relates to the city. Okay.
I think I'll just... Question? Good evening. I think I'll... Hello? Thought we'd go through some of the images that I have here quickly, just to promote some discussion or have some background. It does have some pictures from a rally this past year and some other places that the Riverton balloon has been. Not only in Wyoming, but in other rallies in the western part of the United States. And so, I'll just start. That first picture was a picture of our newest balloon, Cloud Kissler 2. It's actually rebuilt, has the same gore ropes as Cloud Kissler 2 did, and we have the same N-number on it. But the whole fabric is new, the basket is new, to take the place of an unairworthy basket. And this balloon envelope should last many, many years for us. This is just what the balloon looks like on the ground. Takes many crew to help us get it up in the air, but it's just been pulled out of the envelope bag and gets aloft. Gets aloft by propane, going through a burner to give it the hot air. Picture of that. This is a picture of our rally this past year, overlooking part of Riverton and many of the balloons coming up off out of the college area where we have our launch field. This is also a picture from our rally. Shows our newest balloon there, as well as a famous steamboat balloon piloted by Bruce Pivik. And he's been coming to our rally for a number of years. I don't even know how many. This is one of our pilots that have been coming the longest. This is also from the past year. We had the Special Shape Buddy Beaver. And it's always nice to have a special shape, as along with the other regular balloons that usually come. That was the first time that pilot, Colin Graham, flew in our rally, and first time for Buddy Beaver. Just another view, the steamboat and Buddy Beaver. This isn't this year's rally. Actually, this is Media Day, I think. This isn't the regular full contingent of our rally, but we had another Special Shape, Humpty, piloted by Rich Lawhorn from Louisville, Kentucky. Also shows our nice city of Riverton in the background there. Little higher up. That's what you see when you're aloft in a balloon. This was a past rally because we didn't have Smokey the Bear here this past year, but we've had him for a number of years. And another view of our launch field from the air. Wanted to show also some of the community support that we get from people. This is Ernie Over who's been our MC for a number of years and holding one of our programs that lifts all the pilots and balloons. So, Ernie does a good job talking about the balloons. And there's also music that comes out of the system here that makes it a nice spot for, for people to go ask questions if they have, if they're looking for somebody. And Ernie usually has the map that shows where every balloon is on the field, so they can show sponsors or people looking for certain people on the field where they might be. This is another pilot, Steve Scott, used to fly for U.S. Energy, now for Classic Medical, but he's acting as our safety officer here. This is a nighttime glow that we try to do Saturday night if it's not too windy, and it's our Cloud Kissler glowing. This is a picture of Albuquerque a couple of years ago. You can see the Cloud Kissler in the center of the picture. It was, the Cloud Kissler has been in Albuquerque two different times, 2009, or excuse me, 2003, and 2000... This is a lot of the special shapes that they have here in that Cloud Kissler, ascended right in the middle of all the ones. This is Lake Havasu Balloon Rally that the Cloud Kissler's been in, in January of 2012 and 2000, or 2013, 2014. This is a Mesquite Rally that follows the Lake Havasu Rally in January flying. This is a Casper, Wyoming rally. See the Cloud Kissler off to the right that flew in Casper. Many people think that's unusual to have a balloon rally in Casper, but really, in the summer, in the early morning, there are many flyable days in Casper. So, we went over the very first year when they first started their rallies, not thinking we were gonna fly, and lo and behold, we woke up to a calm morning. And they've actually had a pretty good percentage of flyable days in the early mornings in the summer. This also is in Casper. This is Cloud Kissler 2 looking at flying. That's Cloud Kissler 3 in the picture taken from Cloud Kissler 2. This is also Casper. This is Southernlands that sponsored Cloud Kissler 2. They've been loyal sponsors, have actually requested to be sponsors now that they, their store enjoys sponsoring at the Casper Rally, and they specifically asked for the Cloud Kissler to sponsor. This is in Cody that also has a rally. Casper's is the weekend after ours, and Cody is two weekends after ours. So, there's three Wyoming rallies in a row, Riverton, Casper, then Cody. And in the front here is Linda Sands, and she's an author, and she also provides homestays for pilots. It's expensive to house or lodge the pilots in Cody, so they use community homestays. And she's one of the homestay ladies that I stayed with this past year. Very interesting lady. There she is again helping, and this is what part of the crew does. They are actually helping deflate the balloon after a flight is over. Takes many hands. This is also Cody, shows Heart Mountain and a view from the balloon. This was a rally in Erie, Colorado. Just shows some of the passengers getting ready to get aloft. Crew from, from Erie also, in a little selfie with, she helped crew for the Riverton balloon. She was wanting her face in the picture. This is Riverton, shows the shadow of our balloon along the river. Another one aerial shot over Riverton. This I just wanted to introduce is a new balloon that Rich Lawhorn, who flies Humpty, purchased this one. And it may be consideration in our committee meetings to see if we can work with Rich in bringing Snowbird our rally this year. This is another Special Shape owned by Deb Waltman from Windsor, Colorado. That may also be in the discussion for coming to our rally this, next year. It will be our 35th rally, so you want to make it extra special. And this balloon's name is Norman. There you go.
Well, one of my reasons for doing this is we've been a part of the city now for a couple of years, and we thought it would be appropriate for us to take this opportunity to kind of present to you some of what we do and where we've been, and also kind of to give you some ideas of where we're hoping to go. Every year, we, obviously, we travel around the country quite a bit, within Wyoming, and then also mostly in the western parts of the state. So, we, we go through processes of applying to these rallies and figuring out, planning our schedule about where we go. And since we're under, or part of the city now, or at least have joined with the city, we would like to basically ask for your support in our travels and what we do, not on a financial basis, but just on a basis of you guys knowing what's going on and what we do. That's, that's about it. We definitely would like to open up to questions as far as if you guys have any questions specifically about what we do, how we do things, or how we run things, we'll do our best to answer those.
I have a question right off. How many out-of-town events do you attend on average, you know, on behalf of the committee in the city of Riverton?
It has ranged through the years, depending on how many pilots are actively flying, also our schedules. I've been to maybe as many as seven or eight in a year. Or this past year wasn't as open for me personally, and there were some issues with some insurance that restricted us from some out-of-state travel that I think we've resolved now. So, this, this past year, not as many, maybe, other than the Riverton balloon, we did Casper and Cody, and I think it was in Erie, Colorado, just happened to be where our repair station is, in Longmont. And we were picking up the balloon from a repair or annual, one of the two, and happened to be at the same time Erie, Colorado was having a rally. So, we ended up going to that one, but I think really restricted this year. Actually, in January, excuse me, if you go back to January of last, of this year, it was in Havasu and Mesquite. So, one, two, three, and the three in Wyoming, six this year that I've been to. That's great.
Yeah, it gives us an opportunity when we're outside of the, the area promoting our, our event as well and promoting the city and promoting the area. So, we, the balloon itself has been flying for 23 years now, and it's been one of our main missions, promote the area and promote balloons as well. So, it's been a good, good tool, a lot of fun for us to do.
Now, is there a circuit, or for lack of a better word, is there a circuit? Because you were talking about applying for different rallies, and some of the special balloons, they kind of pick and choose which ones they want to go to?
Exactly, right. Most of these rallies, especially in this part of the country, happen in the summertime, because it's much more enjoyable for the spectators. Balloons actually fly a little bit better in the wintertime, because the weather is a little more stable, and the temperature difference allows us to fly with less fuel and to actually work better. But since we're kind of a spectator sport from the, from the bottom, it's nice to be able to see, so most of these events at least happen in the summertime, so there's so many, only so many weekends that you can have. Plus, our event, our rally, has lasted for 35 years, which is actually pretty rare. Rallies kind of come in, come and go, dependent upon support and just ability for people to make them happen. Fortunately for us here in Riverton, we've got awesome community support and community participation as well, so forward to going for a long time.
Just to go back to, Mike said, some of the rallies that have not made it in Wyoming, there used to be one in Rock Springs that folded, and it ended up being mainly one family that was trying to keep it going. And it needs more community, community support than that. Whirland had one at one time, and we helped get Cody and Casper's rallies going, and there's continuing, but it's not always easy. The Billings has had a rally in the past that's struggling. Drix is trying to keep theirs going, but it's been struggling in Idaho, Drix, Idaho. But we're fortunate to have a healthy rally every year. So, we're, we're really trying to make our 35th one coming up this next July extra special, because it is an accomplishment for our community to have pilots that continually want to come. We've had several that have been coming for 20-plus years. Rally is number 35, and there's some that go almost to 35 years. So, we're, we're lucky to have a very healthy rally still.
It is one of the premier events of the year here in Riverton, so... Does anyone else have any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do you find that most of the balloons that come in are people that you've met at, at these other rallies? Or, or like, how do they find our rally?
We'll fight over it. Yeah, actually, definitely, when we're out of town, the rallies for pilots at least is an excellent way for us to keep in communication with each other. We also can discuss where great places to fly are and where great rallies and great events are at. As you said, our, our rally's definitely got a great reputation. It's very well-known, not just from a pilot standpoint as well, but also from a spectator standpoint. A lot of folks, both Pat and I know, plan their vacations around various rallies, travel to come see the rallies.
Well, because we've been 35 years in the making, we are actually been in ballooning magazines and a lot of the ballooning publications as the best in the West, so to speak. And so, people do seek us out when they see me on another rally. They said, "I heard you're the balloon meister of the Riverton Rally. I'd really like to come, can I get an invite this year?" So, that's when we're at different rallies. Outside of Wyoming, it's bringing, bringing people in from Utah, Nevada, because I fly, I flew in Mesquite, Nevada, so that I meet different pilots that are in that vicinity, or Lake Havasu, Arizona, I've been to Albuquerque. That's where the camaraderie of ballooning is, and that's where they notice our Riverton Rendezvous logo. I mean, I have people coming up to me, "Oh, I've hunted in that area," or "I need to get back to that area, it was so awesome, and you actually have a rally there too?" And, you know, it's amazing, the camaraderie and the promotion that this balloon gets our city flying around the country.
What's, what's the furthest you've flown our balloon from here?
From?
Like, what's the furthest rally you've been to?
Oh, I actually took the balloon to Leon, Mexico, and it flew there. So, it has international exposure as well, because there are a lot of, well, Albuquerque does too, has a lot of international pilots. But it flew there for five years in a row, '08 to 2012 in Leon. So, that's the farthest, and then other than that, probably Albuquerque.
A well-traveled balloon.
Yes. Made its mark for our city.
Any other questions?
Ma'am, it's what you were talking, so you, you invite the various balloons to come to the rally? Is that how it works, or can they say, "We're gonna, we're gonna come"?
No, they need, we send out in about February, we send out a pilot invite, that's, most rallies do that. Again, we look at the pilots that we had a year before, or in the last couple, two, three years, being, and then, some of our pilots that have been coming for a long time have stopped ballooning and the aging process, they're just not ballooning anymore. So, that's where it's helpful to get other rallies to keep that number that we'd like to have, like 25-ish balloons. It's, seems to be what we're able to support with our sponsors, as well as our field handles 25 nicely. And to keep that number active when there are some people that can't make it for a particular year, or because they're not flying anymore, getting out to other rallies, that's when we can invite new pilots to come. I would say every, every rally, we have at least two, three, four, maybe, pilots that have never been here before that are filling in spots that past pilots couldn't make. But we like to make a priority to our returning pilots that are interested in, in coming year after year, because they are sort of our loyal fan base. But on that same note, going to other rallies throughout the, the West that I do, there are some pilots that you know will be great ambassadors for the sport of ballooning, that you, you get to know when you're at other rallies, and you, you want them to come, and vice versa. You know pilots that maybe you don't want to have here, that are maybe a little more reckless in their flying. So, getting out to other rallies and actually flying with other pilots in the area, you sort of know what kind of pilot you want to bring to Riverton.
You talked about your, the space of it, did you see, does that restrict you? I mean, would you be able to have a bigger event if you had a, had a larger area to take off, or you staggered takeoffs? I mean, I guess I'm, I guess I'm wondering, is that the size of the event you, you want to keep it at, or would you be able to grow it? I mean, do you have enough support to grow it if?
Right now, we do best with that number as far as getting sponsors. We'd probably have to be beating down the door a little bit more than we have to now, making sure we can have a sponsor for every balloon, because that, their support with their sponsorship has helped paying their, a little bit of their travel expenses and their lodging for when they come. So, any more than about 25, we might be worried if we're gonna get enough sponsors to cover those balloons.
I have one more question. The sponsors, is that countywide, only Riverton? Do you get their sponsors from all over the county?
We've had sponsors from Casper and Dubois. I don't remember any further than that, off the top of my head.
Unless it's a family reunion, you know, people coming in. I, I know Bill McCoy has a lot of, he's a pilot that has a lot of family that, some that come in for the rally, but it, you know, has that Riverton base. I would say it's, it's mostly local unless somebody specifically is going to be visiting here and wants to sponsor a balloon while they're here.
And if someone wanted to do that, how would they go about doing that? Just contact you?
There'll be a sponsor committee that will be sending out sponsor letters, but if you don't get a letter, we try to get a little bit of publicity in the newspaper and advertising. Sometimes it's by word of mouth. Sometimes people find out after the fact that they would have liked to sponsor a balloon and didn't know the procedure, but hopefully, they'll keep us in mind for the following year, if that happens. But they can either sponsor for one day of the rally or both days of the rally, and we've come up with a $350 sponsorship fee for one day, or 600 for two days. And that covers not only the ride and the balloon, but the tailgates and all the, as much camaraderie as you want with your pilot. There's been sponsors that have sponsored us year after year, seeking a particular pilot. They've just, you know, formed that relationship that, and we have several like that. In fact, some won't even sponsor unless that pilot's coming, kind of thing. It's just that rapport that they've developed over the years.
Oh, how nice.
We also have a website, and people could call the city of Riverton if they wanted to ask about sponsoring as well.
Great, thank you. Any other question?
One other thing, just for the sake of clarity... One other thing, just for the sake of clarity for anyone who's watching. Courtney, could you say just a few things about the finances and how that's handled with the city?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Your Honor, this is a very unique partnership that we have. In fact, this is how unique it is when Stephen and I, Mr. Weaver and I, met with another insurance agency last year just to try to seek a competitive bid with our property and casualty insurance right now. That insurance agency would not provide coverage for our hot air balloons. These are city-owned hot air balloons because that's what the agreement was surrounding. And so, when we brought that, those hot air balloons into the city in 2011, we also became the agent for those funds. So, they're handled under any other guidelines, processes, procedures that we have with the city. I'm a little amazed this committee's acting a little humble tonight. But they put a lot of work and a lot of time. Start meeting in January and it literally does take every minute of those seven months to get an event going. But prior to the city even entering into that agreement, Pat was seeking grant funds. And they've received grant funds in the amount of $12,000. A year ago, we received grant funds for $33,000 mainly because District 25, when we were Visitors Council and the REC Board contributed more money because we needed a new envelope. And was that a new basket as well, Pat? So, they currently have about $45,000 in their fund. It takes about $20,000 to $30,000 to run the rally, which we get a lot of sponsorships and grants for. So, they don't make a whole lot of money in whatever they do because we pay it out in pilot sponsorships, pilot propane, they get show-up money, they get other kinds of monies. And so, it's added a new level to this partnership, I think. But we handle it just like everything else.
Thank you.
If I could say one more thing about the insurance. When you heard Pat refer to the insurance, this agreement that we have with the city said that the Rendezvous Committee, who is a committee appointed by the governing body, will have additional insurance to take care of out-of-state travel. So, if you heard Mike refer to that, we've had a few hiccups with that. Mainly because local government liability pool where we currently have our liability, they were a little concerned that they were traveling out of state. So, if you have different limits of liability from one state to another state, who's on the hook for that gap? And we didn't want the city to be on the hook for that gap, right? In case something, God forbid, happened. But the first question is always going to be, how many accidents or occurrences have there been in 35 years? Zero for this, for these balloonists. So, we haven't really had any problem with that. But we had to purchase additional insurance, which was, Rendezvous again, paid for, for $1,089. They purchased additional insurance to travel out of state to cover that gap if there was, God forbid, an event or something that happened.
Thank you, Courtney.
I would like to add one thing that I forgot to say and Courtney touched on this. But we, in our partnership with the city, we have not requested funding from the city. So, our partnership is more administrative and the Rendezvous Committee not needing to maintain a corporation and those sorts of things. It helps mainly with the workload so that the committee can focus more on the events and flying than doing the administrative work, so.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Well, thank, oh.
So, I was just gonna say the next place the balloon will be going for rally, I've been invited to Lake Havasu again in January and it's the third week in January. And the very next weekend, since it's close in vicinity, is the Mesquite Rally in Nevada. So, there's actually a lot of Riverton people that go to Mesquite in the winter. I didn't realize that. So, they get to see their balloon in Mesquite. So, I have been approved by those organizations, those events, to fly there and receive the certificate of insurance from our new chance insurance for those rallies, so. Other than that, there will be some, I think there's a big few months in there that the balloons will go to annual. So, into February, we have a safety seminar in Cheyenne and our repair station guy from Longmont, Colorado, actually is at that safety seminar. So, he usually picks up those balloons from Cheyenne from us and then goes down to Longmont and lets us know when they're done. It's just a required procedure that our balloons every year go get inspected. And if it's not any repairs needed, it's usually about a $350 per balloon to get it annuald. It just goes up from there if there's any repairs or hoses that need to be replaced or ropes or anything like that. So, usually in February, when it's not really flyable as much here anyway, that's when we scheduled our annuals in Longmont. So, then we get them back in March somewhere and we'll try to get current again, keep our skills up for flying the summer season. We do have to have three landings every 90 days. And sometimes through the winter here between our schedules and weather, if that 90 days goes by, we actually can only fly solo. We can't take any passengers until we have three landings. So, that has happened once in a while, not very often. We try to make sure we're flying on at least a monthly basis just to keep our own skills. The more confident we are with our flying, the better it is for everybody. So, we want to keep current with our skills. So, any flyable weekend, you might see the balloon up even all winter long just to make sure we're staying current in our skills.
Those must be those surprise Saturday morning or weekend flights. You'll hear them and you'll go out there and there's the balloon and you think, "What's going on?"
Well, luckily in the winter, if you're not an early bird, like we have to get up so early in the summer. In the winter, we actually, if we have a calm day all day, can actually push the time, starting time a little later because it's cool all day. You don't have to worry about it getting too warm or the winds picking up for us, so.
It's always a nice surprise when you hear the balloon.
Thank you, we think so too.
Yeah, yeah. And one other question, how many pilots do we, do you have?
Currently, we have Mike and I and Steve Scott, who is in the picture up there. We did lose a pilot and unfortunately Jenny Holkman, if anybody knows her, moved to Sheridan in June. She still wants to come back to our rally, though I understand she just purchased her own balloon though. She is hoping to come back here and fly it in July.
Well, thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation.
I think Riverton should be very proud. I mean, just speaking of myself, I moved here in 1990 and was amazed that there was a hot air balloon. And I got involved with the club right away as a crew person. There were plenty of pilots in training and they didn't really have room for me at the time. But I must say, I think it's what's actually still keeping me in Riverton because my children are grown and moved away. And as much as I miss my grandson in Philly, it sure would be hard to leave this relationship I have with the balloon in Riverton because it's a passion of mine. I don't know what else to say. I think Riverton is blessed to have this.
Well, I know you've demonstrated that over the years. You're the only pilot I've ever known. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you. Keep up the good work. At this time, we have a presentation regarding the school bus sign violation. And the city administrator will now introduce the participants in that?
Yes, Your Honor. I think Lake Havasu City in January sounds really nice. So, we're gonna have a presentation from the people that work at the bus barn and people that drive the school buses. This came about when they've had a couple violations where people were running this, you know, when you pull up to a stop sign or, I mean, a stop bar and the lights all come out and people are running past them and kids are just trying to get on the bus. And so, they invited, asked for a meeting with the mayor and I and the chief. And so, we sat down and talked about this. And as we talked about it, we really felt a need to get the word out to people, folks, of the importance of following the rules and the laws for the safety of our children here in Riverton. And so, tonight, we have a couple of individuals here. We have Barry Capellan, did I spell that right? And Mike Forgut, and James Sanford, and Richard Bennett. And so, we'll turn the time over to them and talk about the different issues and any questions you have.
Thank you for inviting us here to speak with you a little bit. I believe that the more public information we get out on our stop arm violations, the better it'll work out for us. I'll give you a little background here. This was all made possible by House Bill 5. The state funded that bill with $5 million to equip 1,500 buses in the state with stop-arm cameras. That went into effect March 17th of this year. Their requirements is participants have to have these installed by July 1st of 2017. Riverton got theirs completed August 29th of this year, just before school started. Wyoming's the first state to require stop-arm cameras on all school buses. Our local law enforcement has been great helping us out with working to sue the process of getting the word out and getting people to pay attention to this. We've made our children's safety a priority. Chief Broadhead and Captain Byerly, Police Department, provided us with a form to fill out meets the requirements they need for information. What happens when we have a stop sign violation is driver will come in and report it. Mike here usually pulls the video footage and checks to be sure that we have done everything correct and that it actually is a violation. Then it gets turned over to the Police Department and it's our discretion whether to write a citation or not. They have written a few and Sheriff's Department is also on board with this. In fact, they issued a citation today on a stop sign violation. I'm gonna turn this over. Little video presentation for you.
If you could just introduce yourself.
I'm James Sanford and I'm one of the bus drivers, but I also help with the IT, kind of helping out with when the bus cameras were installed, helping them get up to speed and helping all the schools to be able to, you know, view any footage, anything like that that they may need. And what I'm gonna go to, what I'm gonna show you is what we see in the computer and, you know, what we can bring up from and then from the hard drive. And also the locations on the bus of the cameras. Basically, I wanted to give an idea of the dangers to students. You know, a lot of times, you know, the other lanes, you know, a lot of people expect vehicles to actually pass us in the other lane coming towards us. But we also do get vehicles going around the bus on the driver's side. They'll actually pass us. And there have been incidents, I don't know of any here in Riverton, but I've heard in other communities where vehicles will actually go past the bus. They'll come on the passenger side. Even, there's one video that even actually has kids right there. They have to jump back, this car goes right through. So, all around the bus is, you know, we consider our danger zone, you know, no matter where it is. And as a driver, you know, we're looking forward, side, behind us in all directions. And, you know, a lot of times when kids are 40 feet back, you know, it's hard to, you know, yell directions. And so, our attention inside the bus is almost 360 degrees around the bus and inside the bus also. These are the pictures of the cameras. This is what the interior one on the left side, this is what an interior camera looks like. It also has infrared capabilities. The night vision on it is okay, you know, we can still see in there. But, you know, it's HD, but it's not super HD. And then also on the right-hand side is the buses, the cameras that are located on the outside of the bus. We have two on the outside, three on the interior. And when we do have to pull the video, this is actually the view that we get. REI, the maker of the system, it comes up to us. It shows all five views simultaneously. We can pick each individual picture. We can make them larger, we can kind of move them around a little bit. And what it does is, this particular picture, it shows the interior front. We have one over the driver. We also have one in the rear looking forward. And then we have our red light cameras here on the outside, you know, one pointing to the front and one pointing to the rear. And this, we can go back. This particular one, it's our spare and we use it. It only shows three days up there, but all of the cameras come on whenever we turn the bus on. And then they stay on for 10 minutes after we shut the bus off. And it will, it will show a full month up there if we pull it. And then at the bottom, we can actually have time stamps. We can go through and look at any particular time. We can jump, we don't have to sit there and wait for a video. We can actually jump through it. And then down at the very bottom, you know, we have forward, we have frame. We also have save capabilities. So, we can save this to a hard drive, to a disk. And then we can give that to the Police Department or a school depending on the needs. This is actual video of the camera. Anything that I show today is not gonna show a red light violation, so. But what I kind of wanted to show you is in the top, this is our outside video. And if you notice, the sun kind of blurs one side, but the second video actually picks that up. And so, even if we have a stop sign violation with the sun in one camera, we can usually see that in our other camera. And if you can see, you can kind of tell, it's a pretty good video. When we superimpose this even larger, you know, it becomes a lot clearer. Anybody have any questions on that? I see. And like I say, all of the, all of the video is all simultaneous, all time stamped. So, what you're looking at is actual real time of the driver and what's going on inside the bus. So, that way you don't have five different cameras you have to look at each different time. You know, it's all happening in real time. This is the location of the two cameras outside of the bus. The front camera is mounted just below the driver area. And the front mounted camera or the rear mounted camera is right there near the middle of the bus. And basically, the reason why they have the two, two reasons. One of them is because of the sun issues and also we can see the car coming forward and back. of the sun issues and also we can see the car coming forward and back so that if it doesn't have a front license plate or doesn't have a rear license plate, we can also capture those incidents. And I just kind of wanted to give a view, you know, this is the rear one, this is for oncoming traffic, this is where we have most of our violations, people coming towards us. And what I wanted to kind of show, if you look at the top, you know, I've made the picture bigger and, you know, it can show the license plate and we can see the license plate pretty clearly in most instances. And then this is the same from the front camera, you know, looking back. And like I say, you know, that way if we have a driver that doesn't have his license plate on the front or the rear, we can, you know, ensure that we see that plate so that we can give the information to the police department. And this is, this is kind of what we look at as bus drivers, they kind of show us this and tell us about it as we're training. And this shows where the cars should be stopped and, you know, two lane roadway, they should be stopped each way. Two lane with a center, which we have here on federal, you know, they should be stopping, even if they dive into that center lane and they're going to turn left, they still need to stop for the bus. And then the four lane without a meridian, all sides should stop. I know sometimes we have instances out here on the highway, we'll stop on one side and the cars on the other side think that they'll go by. If it has a meridian lie similar to what's on Main Street, then that other traffic can go by. But if they don't have that meridian available, then they're supposed to stop. And our cameras are actually set up to where you can, we can get a picture of license plates all the way over about four lanes. And this is, like I say, the four lane without separation is probably where most of our violations would happen. You know, it's, we don't have any stops where kids would actually be going, but there may be an incident where a kid's late, you're stopped, he's on the other side and he comes running across, you know, across that traffic. And we want to make sure that they're safe. And this just kind of tells about the interiors. And then on the interior, we have one camera above the driver, you know, looking at the door. And this also, in the timestamp, will show him reaching across and you can actually see him activating the lights and you can see the flashing of the lights. So that way if the police department do look at the video, they can look and see when he reaches over, when he turns that on. And, you know, it timestamp so they can actually see the car. When you have the five views, you can actually see where that car's at while those lights are activated. And this particular one, it shows the main recording box there on the left. This is where the hard drive is located and it's just a regular pull hard drive, you just have a key, comes right out. And then we have a cord that we can plug into computers that are set up with the REI program and show you that one, that one view of all five. And this is, this is what the front camera can see, you know, it can show our students kind of what's going on. And you can even see on the outside, vehicles passing, you know, passing by. And this one is on the rear camera, this is looking forward. And this one's also important to the police department because it actually will show the stop arm. If you, you look at the left hand side of the bus, you can actually see the stop arm come out and the lights activate. And it also kind of shows that other lane so that if somebody does actually come by, they can see, hey, guess what, that light was out, you know, we can see your car coming past it. And that's all of the cameras that I have. You know, do you want to see any other views or?
I have a question.
Sure.
So just for clarity, so out on the highway, that's where I've seen people pass in buses. So a four lane with the center turn lane, the opposite direction has to stop, correct?
Correct. As long as there is no meridian on the highway, they have to stop.
It has to be a built up or?
There has to be a barrier for them to be able to stop.
Thank you. And just a question, when you say fines, I mean, what is the amount of the fines that are?
Actually, I just do the camera part, I don't know if.
Chief.
Those fines are regulated as municipal violations, so the fines up to $750 per violation.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So basically, when you see the school bus stop wherever you are.
Correct. I mean, even, even this year, you know, we just had one yesterday that I believe they're going to talk about. This year I've had three and I know other drivers have had, like I said, very, at least twice a week on average.
Are they mainly in town, out of town, is it, or does it matter?
We have quite a bit of both. We have quite a few in town violations, we have a lot out of town. We just had one yesterday. It was west of town out here that the sheriff department handled for us and they did write a citation on it. So it happens in town, out of town. State statute says that we use these loading lights anytime that we are loading or unloading students, no matter where we're at. The clarification on where you need to stop is anywhere except on a divided highway. And I don't believe we have a divided highway in Fremont County. If you're meeting or coming up behind a school bus that has its loading lights activated, the law requires you to stop.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My name is Mike Forget, I'm the lead mechanic at the bus garage. When we first put these cameras in, there was a little bugs on RPD's, our part, everybody's part, but since we had our meeting, there was some concerns. We had our meeting with RPD and the mayor and the city of Riverton. And if you don't mind, I'd like to pass some of these around, this is what RPD has come up with, the form that my drivers have to fill out, okay? Once they fill that, there is a violation, they fill the form out, they bring it to me. I retrieve the hard drive out of the bus, I put it on my computer, I look and see if there was an actual violation. Because sometimes, you know, it's a little, the lights were turned on, the guy was halfway past the bus, okay? But to make sure that it is a stop arm violation. Then I fill the paperwork out, I go ahead and I download it onto a zip drive, take it to RPD and boy, they're on it. They do a fabulous job and I want to thank RPD for what they have done. And it's just making our community and our children much safer. Also, another thing that they really didn't, these just aren't just for stop arm violations, these are also for our children's safety, okay? If there's an incident on a bus, bullying or something like that, we can pull this up, okay? Find the incident, put it on a zip drive, send it to whether it be law enforcement or the principal and proper actions can be taken. And they're also for the safety of our driver too, right? Heaven forbid there was an accident and they said, well, the driver was at fault because he didn't do this, that or the other. But we can prove what the driver was doing, whether it be right or wrong. So it's for everybody. Just the state has stood up to the plate and, you know, mandated us to do this, I think it's a wonderful deal, works well for everybody. Now, if we can get the word out to the community, see flashing lights, stop means stop.
Exactly. Your Honor, is there any audio associated with this?
Yes, we have audio, we have five cameras total, two on the outside, three on the inside. The only audio is for the three cameras on the inside of the bus, there's no outside audio. That thing was just crazy. But there's another thing we could do with these two, and I brought it up to law enforcement, whether it be sheriff's office or RPD. Seen the clarity of these outside cameras? Let's say there's an accident that happened in a crosswalk or something somewhere, all right? They can call us and say, did you have a bus location at a certain time? Well, I can look and say, yes, I did. I can pull the video, see what happened, help these guys out too. Because our buses are all over the community, whether it be out of town, in town. Work to everybody's advantage. Questions? Thank you for what the community's done and what RPD has done for us.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Peter? I think it's a great idea. My pet peeve is school zones and the laws that go with those.
Well, it's the future of our, I mean, they're our children.
Yes.
Got to make sure they're safe and that's all of our job, all of us bus drivers, Barry, all of us, we take our job very serious. Hauling potatoes, hauling, have to get them from school, safe. Just a tool to help us do it.
And you do. One question I do have, and this is just something I've heard. The bus system in Riverton, Wyoming is one of the most innovative, the way you pick up kids, drop them off, that whole system isn't, I remember years ago, there was an article somewhere that that was one of the most innovative systems around, whoever came up with that.
We, we call that our transfer area, transfer system. This came about before my time and I've been with the school district for 28 years, I believe. We had a man move in here from someplace in California. He watched our bus systems, followed 15, 20 buses to every school in town. He come in and made the suggestion that we look into doing a transfer area situation. It got set aside in a file cabinet for a few years and finally a light came on and looked into and it works out really well. Our buses go out of town, pick up kids on rural routes, bring them to the bus garage and then we disperse them to however many buses we need to take them to each school. I don't have the figures in my head right now, but I think it saved us something like 80,000 miles a year travel. It shortened some of the bus route times by 30 to 40 minutes, kids had to be on the buses. So it's worked out well and there's a few districts in the state that have kind of modeled after what we're doing, modified it to fit their needs. Casper does a huge exchange right now and they just started that, I believe, a year ago. But it works out really well. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the good job you do. That was an interesting evening. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the council work session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and the meeting stands adjourned at. I can't see the clock. Thank you, everyone.